Test one two, test one two. Andrew Noel.
Oh, they can't hear us.
Sorry, yeah, you're just, you're automatically put on mute once you enter, but when it's, when you're called on to speak, I'll unmute you, but I'm just.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'm just, so your connection's working, everything seems, I'm gonna put you on mute again, okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements in a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by, unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members who, only committee members will be participating by video, as well as we have three of us here in person. My name is Michael Clark, I will be in the panel chair. We have Mr. Robert Taylor on my left and Mr. Palmer, Neil Palmer on my right, and we have Michi Miklowski appearing virtually. So we ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnaschoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is also now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, as 1990 has amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is now called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to, to the property, permissions to extend or alter lawfully non-conforming uses, and consents to sever properties to create new lots. Anyone who wishes to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for this, for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal, L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out in the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure today will be as follows. We will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, starting at item 12 and going through to number 20 in order. And when an application is uncontested, uncontested, the applicant or agent will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. Mr. Palmer will be tending to the clock and will comment or will give you some warning where you're at the five-minute mark and ask you to wrap up. When addressing the committee, please start off by stating clearly your name and address for the record. And please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. In a contested application, the applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee. Please note the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. That will then mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken in the committee for a decision. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff for the items in this afternoon's agenda? Nope. Okay, so we can then proceed to the first item of this afternoon's agenda, which is item number 12, Eight Cudworth Place. And on this application, which is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, we have registered as speakers, Mr. Giordano with David Small Design, who is the agent. Neighbors in opposition, Jana and Bill Adair from 19 Hearn Hill, Andrew and Leah Noel, who are the owners of the property in attendance as well, and as well in opposition next door to the Adairs, Andrew Tykman at 21 Hearn Hill, which I believe is the street behind the subject property. So this application, we have five variances. And planning is, has a suggested a condition of approval to construct a driveway with permissible pavers if the application is approved, as well as urban forestry is looking for their conditions two and four. So, Mr. Giordano, are you with us?
I certainly am.
Okay, and the neighbors are here as well, Paul? Okay, so, Mr. Giordano, why don't you give us a brief presentation of the proposal? We'll then hear from the neighbors and you'll have a chance to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Peter Giordano. The subject property, as was already mentioned, has, requires consideration of five variances. The subject property is on a private court with approximately nine lots that face the court. It's a trapezoidal shaped, often referred to as a pie-shaped lot. The narrowing of the property towards the front forces the house to slide back on the property as it steps back, but we've, we've retained all setbacks to the side yard, so we don't have any issues with any of the side yards as a result of the pinching of the property. The year, the rear yard, although wide at its, at its widest point of the lot, still pinched by the house and, and the covered porch that projects beyond the house. The first variance requires an increase in lot coverage from 33% to 36.1%. It's common for covered porches in the city of Toronto that are less than 5% of the lot area to be excluded from the covered totals, placing our house as a comparable at only 30.5%. What I'm getting at by that is that this zoning requires that the covered porch at the back be included in the overall coverage, which often isn't the case. So variance number two requires an increase in the FSI, the floor space index, from 0.5 to 0.54. That's an increase of approximately 257 square feet. The tapered lot results in a rear yard variance of 8.74, where 8.85 is required. Now, that's a difference of four inches dimensionally, but that is taken at the right rear corner of the property, and because of the tapering of the lot, that required setback of, and being only four inches, it's, is at its minimum only at that one corner, and then it greatly increases as you head towards the left side of the property. Variance number four requires a variance for building length. Now, 16.5 is what's required, and we're asking for 17.63. The front yard setback is an arch, an arched setback line that sets back from the front of the property. The building itself, that the, the starting point of the building, because of the pinch point, is approximately 0.38 meters back from that, that curved arch at the front. So that's, that's where the measuring point starts. The main portion of the house, measured from the front wall to the furthest extension of the second floor, only measures 13.67 meters in a linear length. So the massing of the house, taken from the very front of the house to the very back wall of the second floor, which is the furthest projection, is 13.69. It's not even close to the 16.5 that's allowed in the building length. So we've staggered the house in a way that allows the massing to be more conducive to the neighboring properties on either side. Now, the driveway width is our last variance. The exist, there's an existing utility pole on the city land at the front, and the required setback to that utility pole is 1.5 meters. And as such, the driveway has to taper around that utility pole, and we're asking for a variance for that driveway width from six meters to 7.03 meters. Once again, the private court has nine houses that face the subject property. Our clients have spoken to all of the neighbors, and they have support from six of the eight houses on that court, and then they have support from 10 and 16 on Robin Hood Road, which is at the head of the court. Understand that we have opposition from two neighbors. They're the, the neighbors immediately behind us on Hearn Hill, and I'll let them speak to their objection. And I understand it's mostly about the pool and the location of the pool equipment, but I'm prepared to answer any questions that they might have. We acknowledge that the planning staff has no objections to our application, and we believe that our variance has passed the four tests of Section 45 of the Planning Act.
Wow, you finished exactly at five minutes. Exactly. Before we go on to the neighbors, Mr. Giordano, could you just, you know, in your, in your presentation specifically with respect to the rear lot line variance and the building length, and indicating it's just in certain extreme spots and not across the whole lot, would you be amenable, just to throw that open for committee members, to have any approval tied to the plans for the protection of the neighbors in that regard? So the neighbor can say, oh, I'm, you know, I know it's only over in a little corner for the, the, the depth for the two objecting people, but in fact, the majority of it complies. For them to take some comfort in that, that any approval be tied to the drawings that you've submitted, to make sure you don't have that rear lot line variance across the entire lot?
Yeah, the, the, the plans, the way we've presented them are what we're planning to do. Now, is that gonna be for the footprint of the house, or?
Well, it would be up to committee members to see what they would tie it to, but whatever plan, whether it's a site plan, just to ensure that what you're telling us is what is actually gonna be built.
Absolutely, I guess the only reservation I have there is the, the pool will have to undergo a pool permit, so. And the exact proportion of the pool will be determined by the company that builds the pool, so. That's where, you know, that's.
Your variance at 0.54 GFA, if you, you know, if you triggered anything, then that amount would go up anyway, so that's further protection, but I'm just often throw that out, see if you're willing to have it tied to the plans.
I'm willing to have it tied to the plans.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have two neighbors registered. I think we have a letter from, from the Adairs. Who, are both parties willing, wishing to speak, or let's hear first from them, the Adairs at 19?
Hi, thank you very much, it's Bill Adair speaking, so I, I will speak for our family. And I'd like to start by recognizing that Andrew and Leah, who are the owners of the property, have been very warm and, and fine neighbors. And so what we have to say here is presented respectfully, and, and in the hopes that, that this, this neighborliness will continue. That the people concerned here have had a chance to look at our letter, and it, it, our concerns have to be introduced by recognizing that both of the backyards of our properties are very small relative to other properties in the neighborhood. So almost the full length of the, both properties border on each other. So we are the, we're the property that would have the greatest concern about proximity of the spa, the pool, and the pool, the pump house, and the equipment. So our, our requests have been, have been made clear, and essentially, we're asking that the pool and the spa be shifted closer to the house, and that that will allow for more space at the property line, which will have the effect, to some extent, of cutting, cutting down on, on potential noise and interaction between the, the two properties. So in particular, we're concerned about the, the pump house being located where it is, and as noted in our correspondence, we would, we, we would ask Andrew and Leah to move this to the location where the existing shed is. And we, we, our final item is to inquire about what is planned for a fence on the, on the two property lines, and, and are the, is a cedar hedge going to stay? Is there something going to replace that? And a clarification on what's required in terms of, of safety for a pool in a backyard? What's the height of the fence there? So these are, as we say, these are considerations. We, we believe that the variances noted in, in number three and, and variance number four tend to shift everything back towards our property line. And so that's basically our objection. However, if, if Andrew and Leah are prepared to shift the pool and the spa closer to their house, which may cut down a, a small amount on the, the patio area between their house and the, and the porch that they plan, this would be, this would be acceptable to us.
Thank you, Mr. Adair. Does any of the committee members have any questions for Mr. Adair before we move on to the next speaker? And just to clarify, question for staff, so the length variance and the rear yard setback is with respect to the main structure, not with respect to the pool and/or the spa and/or the pool equipment? Correct, okay. In terms of, I guess there's certain regulations for fencing around pools for safety. So does anyone else have any other questions, or we'll move on to the next speaker? Okay, so.
Sir, can I just, I'll ask, I don't see any pools or spa plans attached to this application. Am I missing something? And they wouldn't be within our purview, anyway.
Unless it's a very.
We, we don't, we don't have them.
Like, you're only, you see, it would be with respect to the number of accessory structures or the size of the exterior, we don't see any variances like that.
So the site plan does show a pool in the rear yard and the spa, but unless there are variances related to that, those are all permitted.
Okay. Okay, do we have Mr. Tykman at 21 Hearn, are you with us? You see here, Mr. Tykman?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Okay, so.
Your turn to make some comments, I don't know if you've heard what your neighbors at the Adairs had to say at 19, but let us know what your concerns are, please.
Okay, so I, I reside at 21 Hearn Hill, and so the northwest corner of the subject property abouts my sort of side yard, kind of very near where I have a, a deck and a sort of courtyard. And so my, my concerns are with regards primarily to the proposed location of, I guess, the pool and the pool equipment. I don't have any issues or concerns with any of the building variances per se, given I'm fairly far away. And so the only two aspects that I want to point out is, one is the, sort of the location of the, the pool equipment and the way it's configured. It's configured, it's in the corner with some sort of a wall that, a privacy fence that would probably direct sort of any noise towards my, my, sort of my lot. And so I have a concern with that location. And again, as mentioned by the previous speaker, perhaps there's an opportunity to sort of relocate that to where the existing shed is. Alternatively, I mean, I'm not sure what is being proposed in terms of a fence or additional sort of a sound barrier, whether that's a continuation of the existing hedge. So certainly, you know, I'm more interested in seeing you know, some measures being taken to sort of attenuate any sort of sound from that, from that setup. The, the second issue, just want to point out, is there's two, two large Siberian elm trees in, in sort of that northwest corner. They're fairly tall. There is a, I believe, an arborist report that was, that has, was prepared, although it's not part of the review package. And it's been noted that the, the, sort of the structure integrity of those trees is labeled as fair. And so, as an adjacent owner, I would love to, for the owners to consider perhaps kicking those two trees down and perhaps replacing it with a, with a younger tree, and perhaps for maybe even extending the, the current cedar hedge that, that they currently have on part of the back, back lot. So those are my two concerns. Again, I have no concerns with regards to the, the variances, just with regards to what's being proposed or what will be done in the, in the rear yard.
Okay, thank you. Just to let you know that urban forestry, if you check in the file, they have imposed or requested that we impose conditions two and four, which I believe is, and there's a memo in the file with respect to that, and perhaps Mr. Giordano can deal with that in his rebuttal, in dealing with the, so it looks like the only concerns are with respect to the, 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 the depth and the rear yard setback, and there seems to be a request from the neighbors to shift everything forward, which I'm not sure they can do, because we have an application before us, and that would change all their variances. You were suggesting, I guess, or the previous speaker, the Adairs, that they shifted everything and, you know, had the building envelope further forward on the lot, it would provide some relief for them at the back. But I don't believe, Madam Secretary, we can entertain those type of changes in any event today. Okay, Mr. Giordano, can you respond to the neighbors' concerns, please?
Certainly. Urban forestry. We just recently found out, and we followed up with a, an arborist report, that there are two trees that are on the city property at the front, where the driveway configuration was proposed. And those are two trees that are very young. I think the clients had planted those trees, one's a Japanese maple, they're, they're both pretty decorative. They're, they were only planted a couple of years ago. They planted them on city property, not understanding that they were on city property. They like those trees, and what our arborist is proposing in our arborist report is to take those trees and transplant them onto the site. So you'll see that one of the trees on the site plan is shown as transplanted to the front left corner, and tree number two to be transplanted to the back behind the property where the pool is. So we're dealing with that, and we, we trust that urban forestry will be accepting of that. It's just, it, it, we had the arborist report prepared after those comments were made by urban forestry.
Right, I just see that there's some urban forestry comments dated, like, today, that recommends a deferral of the application until the owner provides urban forestry with the necessary information to confirm whether the following bylaw protected trees can be adequately protected. And that's with respect to, they meant, they recognized, I think, three trees, tree number two and tree number three. Okay, there's two trees. Tree number two is a city-owned tamarack, five centimeters street, it's a street tree on the city boulevard. And the street number three is a city-owned Japanese maple, measuring three centimeters. Three centimeters, I don't know.
They're tiny.
I never knew Japanese were, 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 were city trees, but I guess, is that on the city portion of the boulevard?
It is, and that, that's why the city has now taken control of those trees, even though the clients planted them there for, for their own purposes initially.
So what about this deferral request? They're saying we should either defer or their standards, as we can, that we should refuse.
We would prefer not to have.
Oh, sorry, sorry, they don't say refuse. They say if you, despite our, their recommendations, we approve the variances, then you still have to, they want a condition of submission of a complete application for permit to injure or remove a city tree. So that's the alternative. They're not saying to refuse the application. They're saying if we don't defer it, then you, they'd have to, you'd have to apply for a permit.
Right, and we'll, we'll gladly do that, and we, we have plans to take those trees and, and put them in a better place. You can tell by the location of the utility pole at the front and how the
Right.
property line tapers. If we take the utility pole into consideration and the location of those two trees, there's really nowhere for a driveway to occur to access the front of this property.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that you still, if you get approval, you still have to deal with urban forestry and work things out, correct?
Absolutely, we're fully aware of that.
Okay, so sorry for interrupting, go, please proceed, keep going.
Yep, and then the, the neighbor had concerns with the, the two elms at the rear of the property, tree number nine and 10 on our drawings. My clients will gladly undertake an application to remove those two trees. They're, they're not necessarily trees that they're in love with, and, and they would undertake to attempt to remove those trees as well, as best they can.
Okay.
The pool at the back, the pool at the back has a requirement for a pool enclosure permit. So eventually, when the tree, when the, when the pool gets built, the pool enclosure permit will require a four-foot-high fence, minimum four-foot-high fence, that encases the rear of the property, including the pool, with a self-latching gate that, that returns back to the, to the walls of the house so that people can't get into the back and access the pools. I'm, I'm sure Andrew and Leah will be in communication with, with their clients and have them understand the nature of the, the fencing that they'll put back there.
Correct. So they'll, they're undertaking, they'll keep the neighbors apprised, and they're willing to work with the neighbors to deal with these issues?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, is that, that's all you have to say?
Yes. Yes.
Completed, okay, thank you. Committee members, any follow-up questions for either the neighbors or the applicant, the agent, or are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I would just say to the neighbors that the pool, spa, pool equipment considerations are beyond the purview of this committee, but I think as the chair suggests, if you can all agree to work collaboratively on the final design of those components, that would be the way to go. But we, we can't, we can't speak to those considerations as part of our, our purview. My view is that the variances requested are minor in nature and that all the tests under the Planning Act are met, and I would recommend approval subject to urban forestry condition one, the planning department condition about permeable materials used to cover the driveway, and that the building be substantially constructed in compliance with the drawings that have been submitted to the city. That would be my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Seconded for that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. All in favor? You have your approval unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay, so next application is item number thirteen, eighty-three Great Oak Drive. This is an application for... First of all, we have on this application just the applicant on file, Nicholas Dell, Harper and Dellen Associates. Are you here? You with us, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here I am.
Very good, just, so, just trying to open up my... It's minimized. I believe this is for various additions. We have a previous decision of the committee from both 2010 and then a more recent one in 2020, where approval was given for various variances, and it looks like there were two items that were missed. I'd like to make, or hear about that in your presentation. Your FSI, you were granted at the committee back in January, a floor space index of .58, and you're now coming back for a floor space of .65. You know, sometimes we see there's some small errors, but I'd like to hear about how that happened, and as well as a slightly higher soffit height of the eaves. And we have before this, planning is requesting, in the event of approval, a condition of approval that it be built substantially in accordance with the site plan. And I believe that's all we have.
Very good.
So, sir, can you give us a brief presentation, just indicating what happened here while you're back here before us, when you were here in, in January, and there's suddenly two more variances? Did the plans change? Was there some mistake with the calculations? Just how, why are we back here?
Right, so through you, Mr. Chair, you correct me, we're back here. And this is an interesting oversight in that the approval in January of 2020 was tied to the same plans that are before the committee today. But in my, in my absence, when the variance checklist was being submitted to staff, the designer on this file, unused to the regulations in a Tobico, did not include the garage in the FSI of the variance. He actually pushed through a review of the planners capturing of that accuracy at the time. He said, "No, we're going with .58, not .65," as it, as it is today. So the, the plans are exactly the same, and during the elevation approach and the, the changing of, of the, of the FSI numbers to correctly identify the garage addition as part of that, the soffits were also caught by staff in the elevation review. So we have, from, from a neighborhood perspective, nothing to be changed in the plans that were tied to the previous approval, other than we are now capturing the garage as part of the FSI. I think the planning report captures well what, what, what has been said from, from Timor to Neil, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. This was our original proposal, and there was an oversight because of some naivety on the designer's part.
Right, they actually point out that it may be actually technical in nature, the gross floor area variance addition, that maybe it's technical in nature. So they seem satisfied against the, provided the new approval would be, again, tied to the site plan.
Which is the interesting part, right?
Yeah. The, the site plan now includes those two items delineated.
Yes, the, the, the table and the legend is different, but the plans itself are not.
Okay, very good, thank you. So let's see if committee members have any questions for you, or if someone's ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I understand this is, in essence, a technical request. Nothing's different than what we considered and approved in January. I would, I find the variances to be minor in nature, satisfying all the tests under the Planning Act. And I would move for approval, subject to approval of the planning department condition, which is that the proposed development be constructed substantially in accordance with the site plan, submitted and held on file by the Committee of Adjustment Office to the satisfaction of the Director, Community Planning, Atobaco York District.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Seconded for that motion.
I will second that.
She had her hand up. Give it to Mishi, because there's a time, a bit of a time delay. See, I put my hand up, and it goes up after I put my hand up, so the tie goes to the runner. So seconded, all in favor? Okay, you have your approval. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone. Take care.
Okay. Our next application is item fourteen, A, B, and C, or fourteen, A, B, and C, but first is being the consent to sever the property to two lots, and then to build a semi on each of the two lots, each of the lots as severed. We had, this matter was deferred, I believe it was deferred, it doesn't show as a deferral in my file, but it, I think it was deferred January ninth, and I think how it was changed is set out in the planning report. The only condition I believe we have is that community planning is asking, in the event of an approval, that the two semis be built substantially in accordance with the, the plans date stamp February sixth, two, twenty twenty. And urban forestry is requesting their conditions two and three. We have various planning reports here, and... Is the agent here?
Yes, I am here.
On this application, we have, yes, only the agent, Mr. Hippolito, Ambient Designs.
Mr. Marchese is representing the application on behalf of Ambient Victor Hippolito.
Okay.
I discussed it with Barb prior to us coming here live, and everything's been determined, and we figured it out.
Okay, so, Mr. Marchese, your third application here today?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so can you just run us through this briefly, then? There's no one here in opposition. Basically, it's a severance. You know, I don't know if we really need a presentation in terms of this, the community planning is, seems satisfied. You're prepared of, just to confirm that, for this, any approval to be tied to the plans?
Yeah, just quickly, there was extensive conversation with, with, between the planner and the, the city staff on this file here to get to a point where we satisfied them in terms of FSI, exterior main wall height, stories related to the size of the dwelling, and a couple other things. So we've been in extensive conversation with them. We've gotten to a point where we satisfied Trista and the planning department. They have tied it to the plans, and forestry is asking for a standard approval on the, on the, our standard condition on if the application is approved, and therefore I have no issues with the standard conditions, both from planning and urban forestry, if this application is approved today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Committee members, any questions for Mr. Marchese, or are we ready for a motion on this? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, there's also a set of conditions that have been required, requested by Engineering and Construction Services. Are you aware of those, sir, and in agreement with them?
That report is dated January ninth, and I'm under the impression that they've already been dealt with on the updated site plan that was part of the revised plans.
Even though they are, even though notations may have been done, that is still the most up-to-date comment. They haven't provided clearance on those at this point.
Okay, so if it's safe, safe to say, if you want to attach those to them, then you can attach the engineering conditions to it as well.
So are these the general, like, the typical engineering conditions in the event of a severance, you know, municipal numbering and all of that? That's in addition to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a couple, a couple other things that we're looking for.
It's to make notations on the site plans.
Okay. But in addition to this, then we also have the general severance conditions to impose as well. The one-year limitation and all of everything else they have to do, municipal numbering. Okay, so, Mr. Taylor, you have your answer? Any other questions, or are we ready for a motion? And Mr. Marchese indicated he's fine with the, the commissions being requested by urban forestry and planning.
I'll move to approve the application subject to urban forestry conditions. Planning is conditions to be built in accordance with plans, updated plans dated February sixth, twenty twenty, as well as engineering and transportation services conditions regarding the two parts and, and the reference plan. So, yeah, I, I consider these to be minor in nature and move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. McCloskey. A seconded for that motion?
Yeah, I would just clarify, it's Engineering and Construction Services. You okay with that, Mishi?
Sounds good, yes.
Yeah, you said transportation, just, I'm just trying to be...
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's cool. Yeah, I'm good with that. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Mr. Marchese, you have unanimous approval.
Thank you so much, guys. Have a great day.
You, too.
Thank you.
Okay, item number fifteen, five eighteen Evans Avenue, was an application that was deferred from the October twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen hearing. This is an application for, let me just open that up. Construct a partial second-story addition above the existing building. It looks like this was deferred in October two thousand eighteen. The agent says it was adjourned sin ei dai, but I don't believe we adjourn anything sin ei dai, but somehow it just dragged on until now. It was based on a landscape plan, which has now been submitted, I believe. And in addition on this application, we have, I believe that's all we have here. And is Mr. Manuel here with us, the agent?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair, Kevin Manuel. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a covering letter, we have supporting, we have that landscape plan, that long-awaited landscape plan, other supporting materials, photos, we have a planning memo dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty, another planning report, and transportation comments as well. So, good afternoon, sir. Can you give us...
Good afternoon to the committee.
Yeah, can you give us a brief explanation of what's happened on this since October two thousand eighteen? And...
Okay.
Anything else you think we should know?
The original application was to expand the owner's part of the multi-tenant building so his son could grow his own business. But essentially, in the original application in October, we were made aware of very late some planning concerns and some transportation concerns. So we asked for a deferral to have the chance to address those. We addressed those over some time. There was some considerable back and forth, actually, between various departments until we could get everything that everyone agreed to. And then we came back in for another scheduled hearing. That hearing, as I recall, was for March the twenty-third, which, of course, didn't happen, and we are now in a virtual hearing right now.
Yes, you are, okay. Okay, now we see also your covering letter here, which you provide some explanation. Let's see if committee members have any questions for you, or if not, if someone's ready to make a motion on this application.
No questions. I will move for approval. The variances appear to meet the four tests of the Planning Act. So I'll move for approval, subject to planning conditions that it be built in accordance with the site plan submitted February fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Okay, a seconded for that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? You have unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck today.
Thank you.
Okay, next application is item sixteen, ten Athlone Drive. This matter was deferred from the January sixteen, twenty twenty, hearing. It's for a detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are three variances. We have a number of cover letters from the agent, as well as we have support and opposition, and we have, I don't know if we have anything from forestry, do we? Hold on a second. Okay, we've survey plans, minutes, cover letters, five cover letters, and forestry comments. Yes, they're looking for, I don't have a note here about which condition, but perhaps Ms. Flynn Guglietti can let us know about that. And on this application, we have quite a number of people who've pre-registered. We have the agent for the applicant, Mary Flynn Guglietti, who will be speaking. We then have the applicant, who won't be speaking, and several neighbors in opposition from eighteen, twenty-two, twelve, and nine, and seven, Athlone Drive. So, let's get started. Is Mary Flynn Guglietti here?
I am here, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, welcome.
Good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Tom and Kara, and as well, I have the architect with me. I brought them so that any of the questions that you might have, that I might not be able to answer, that they would be able to assist me on this. I will be referring to two of what are called cover letters. One is my cover letter of June eighteenth, and the other is a letter provided on June seventeenth from our client, Tom.
Yes.
And if I could, I'd like to take you to that one, because it has a number of visuals to assist.
Yeah, just to let the members know, that's letters five and four, respectively, in our, in our list. Your letter dated June eighteenth, and your client's letter dated June seventeenth.
Seventeenth, correct, sir. And also, I'd like you to note that you did know, mention that there were some objectors that were present speaking. I also understand that there is a gentleman speaking in support of the application from the neighborhood as well, Mr. Collin. I think that he is on the line, but may not have been available at the time of the road call, so...
Yeah, we have a note of, of letters of support, but in terms of speakers and support, we didn't have, and that name, we don't, is that Colin Curry?
Yeah, Mr. Curry is, he is on the line.
Okay, but he's in support. He was noted on my, my note here that he's in opposition, so I'll change that, okay?
Oh, that's great, sir. Thank you very much.
He was noted that he was gonna, he was gonna be here, but he was in opposition.
No, he's in support, sir. So, thank you for that connection. I do appreciate it.
Okay.
So you can see, the, the letter that you have in front of you right now has been provided by my client. It does have some visuals that I think will be of assistance.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. I'm having, if you maybe speak a little, like, slower. I don't know if you were too close to the phone.
Okay, is that better, sir? Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good, okay. So you'll see that there are three variances being requested. One is with respect to coverage. The permitted is thirty-three, and the proposed is thirty-seven. The next is the gross floor area. Permitted is zero-point-five, and requested is zero-point-seven-four. And the third is with respect to the front yard setback. I'm going to start with that one because of the diagram to the right, and you will see that this is a survey of the proposed structure, and you will see the alignment is almost identical to the alignment of the properties on either side of our client, and it's a request of point-three meters that's being requested. But I wanted to know right off of the beginning... But I wanted to know right off of the beginning that this is in line with the properties and therefore have no impact on the street whatsoever. Now, the other that I'd like you to go to is with respect to the aerial photograph, which I think is very helpful. There are no depth variances. There are no requests with respect to rear yard setback or side yard setbacks or height requests. But as you can see by looking at the aerial view, that most of the houses on the street are set back where the proposed new structure will be. Um, and so is very much in keeping with the neighborhood. Um, the next I'd like to show you is, and I think it's very important, is the comparable neighborhood decisions. There are five right on the street. And with respect to the FSI, you will see they range between zero point six eight to zero point eight. With respect to the neighborhood, there are a number of them listed in the, what we would call the general neighborhood. And they vary. Um, and if you sort of start um, at point zero seven four and they go all the way up to zero point nine three. And so you will see that all of the variances that are listed are equal or greater than the variances with respect to FSI. And again, within the middle column, which is the percentage of lot coverage, you will know in reviewing those that the ones that have been listed, there are five on the street, and there are also a number in the general neighborhood. And all of the ones that are listed are greater than the ones that are, are being sought today. So, the FSI and, and the lot coverage variances are very much in keeping with the immediate neighborhood. It's defined under section four point five of the official plan as well as in the immediate neighborhood and the general neighborhood. Now, the next one I'd like to take, there's a number of photos there as well. And the photos are showing existing structures, ones that were built seventy years ago, as well as new constructions that have been built over the decades. But in this particular neighborhood, it's a very desirable neighborhood. The official plan um, suggests that neighborhoods are to remain stable but not static. And I think you can see from the variety of the homes built, both existing and new, that they have a certain character and they address the certain street. The street predominantly is two stories, even where they're one and a half stories. And the proposed second-story structure will be very much in keeping with this general character of the neighborhood. And the picture of the frontage of the house can be seen back on page one of the presentation. So you can see how that character is very much in, in keeping with the character of the architecture in the neighborhood. Now, with respect to neighbors, you'll note that the next thing is the letters of support, and I think it's a very important chart to put before you because it does show exactly with respect to the immediate neighborhood, which is a major consideration under the criteria listed in the official plan in sections four point one point five. So, as you can see, you have all of the neighbors immediately to the rear. You have neighbors on um, uh, the frontage, all except for number twelve, and then across the street, all the way down to Prince Edward Drive. So immediately surrounding the proposed development, you have quite a bit of support from the neighbors. Now, you had asked me a question about forestry, and I'm glad that you did. And you'll see that there's the heading forestry here. And immediately up, um, uh, to the right is attachment from forestry that just came in on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty from Hendry, um, indeed, from Toronto Forestry, and it says, "Based on the Arbor's report and site plan, I placed a no forestry condition on the file." So this is not a matter that forestry has a concern with. And at the bottom, it just says, you know, during construction, you have to put in uh, the tree protection zone. But forestry has no objections to the application at all. So, that is some of the background that I thought was important to you. And then in my letter, I have sort of set out the four tests under section forty-five, one of the Planning Act. And that is with respect to whether it generally complies with the OP. And a great deal of consideration has been given to the criteria under section four point one point five. And that is that with respect to the neighborhood, it has to be generally in keeping with the neighborhood. And um, it, it has to be an application that's desirable for the lot. And as I mentioned before, when you look at the height, when you look at the setbacks, when you look at the landscaped open space, the rear yard, the depth, no variances are being considered with respect to those matters at all. The variances are concerned with FSI and as well with respect to coverage. The chart does demonstrate that it's very much in keeping with both the general neighborhood and the immediate neighborhood and the variances that have been granted over time. This is a very desirable neighborhood. There's a great deal of reinvestment in the neighborhood. And that's what maintains the neighborhood the way that it is today, which maintains it as being a very desirable neighborhood. And the applicants have been very careful to ensure that the proposed new structure will be in keeping with that character. They have lived in the neighborhood for over fifteen years at this address. And they do really enjoy the neighborhood and want to make sure it's in keeping with the neighborhood and certainly to the satisfaction of the neighbors.
Okay.
So I submit to you that it generally complies with the OP and the zoning. It's a desirable development. And that the variances are very much minor. There are no negative impacts that will be demonstrated to the neighbors at, at all. And we would ask that the committee support it, and I'd be more than happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone have any questions for uh, the agent before we move on to hear from the neighbors? Okay, so I see there's a number of people who've registered in opposition, uh, and one person in support. Uh, I don't know if we're gonna have, you know, is you know, when we're here in person, we ask if there's a spokesperson because people can get together and discuss. Um, so I don't know if that's happened here, but why don't we start with Sharon Fabish and Mark Olioff at twelve Ath- Athlone, who are directly next door and most affected by this build? Um, and then see if other people would like to weigh in. And for those people, other than the neighbors at twelve, if you can listen closely to the submissions, because we'd ask is that you don't repeat the same concerns that have been uh, mentioned by the main, uh, or the, the most directly affected neighbor. And let us know if you have any other concerns other than what they raise. So, as um, between Fabish and Olioff, who's speaker? Are you with us first of all?
Yes, we are. And I'm gonna ask Mark to speak first, if that's okay.
Well, I prefer if you only have one speaker from each household. Unless you're splitting things up, but you'll have, you'll have five minutes between the two of you, so if you'd like to do that and split it up.
Okay, I think we'll be able to do that, five minutes between the two of us.
Okay, thank you. So, please proceed. Well, how are you, you know, why was this, what are your concerns with this application? We have seen your letter and the other letters. But if you'd like to just uh,
My name is Mark Olioff. I'm a resident of twelve Athlone Drive, immediately next to ten Athlone. We're not opposed to a larger second-story building on this lot, but believe a beautiful home can be built keeping closer to zoning bylaws, as has been done by many of the residents on our street. The houses on the north side of Athlone are modest bungalow-style houses, mostly split-level bungalows or modest two-story homes with one exception. All of these houses sit on small lots averaging approximately four thousand square feet. Our main concern is with variance number two, requesting a gross floor area ninety square meters over the permitted amount.
Okay.
This would increase the size of the dwelling from one thousand three hundred and ninety-three square feet at present to three thousand and thirty-two square feet, more than doubling its size on a forty-by-one-hundred-square-foot lot. If approved, this variance in combination with variance number one, which proposes over sixteen square meters beyond the permitted lot area, would lead to a disproportionately large two-story house, extending seventeen feet further back on a small lot with a second-story windows, one facing our bathroom and overlooking our deck, and the other overlooking the middle of our backyard. The structure will eliminate our privacy in our second-story bathroom and our backyard.
Oh, so sorry if I can interrupt. You have a, yes, sir.
Almost half of our backyard, reduce the airflow and general openness of our property, and reduce our sightlines to the east. The considerable expenses we put into building our backyard patio and garden would be wasted because these areas would no longer be desirable places for us to be. We would need to sit near the end of our small backyard in order to have an unobstructed view of the east. Our house, which is typical of the north side of the street, is under fourteen hundred square feet. The proposed size of ten Athlone will also significantly devalue our home and turn it into a tear-down, saleable only to builders, despite the fact that we have made significant improvements inside. There was another house on the street, number seven, across from ours, in which the size of the building proposal and placement of the windows of the new house would have inhibited the sunlight and privacy of the neighbors. The Committee of Adjustment had them reduce the size of the house in order to address concerns expressed by neighbors on the street. We are requesting your support to do the same. We respectfully ask that the committee request that the owners reduce the size of their build and modify placement of the windows to reduce the harms which I have described.
Thank you, Mr. Olioff.
Can I just add?
Can I?
Robert and Rosemary Gardner's survey, which was submitted March sixteenth, examined the floor space index of all the houses on Athlone Drive. Uh, Edgemore Drive as well, immediately north, and Glenroy Avenue immediately south. Uh, the survey indicated the applicant's building proposal is not consistent with the prevailing physical character of the immediate neighborhood. Their survey indicates the average score, floor space index of houses for each side of these three streets range from point three-six to point four-seven. The overall floor space index of all the houses on all three streets is point four-one. The current proposal for ten Athlone has a floor space index of point seven-four, which is far larger than the average. This is out of keeping with the prevailing sizes of home in this immediate neighborhood. We feel it's important to keep in mind that the houses on the north side of Athlone are on smaller lots compared to the south side of Athlone, as well, and compared to most of the lots in the surrounding neighborhood. The average lot size on the north side of Athlone is four, four thousand and twenty-one square feet. The average lot size on the south side is forty-seven hundred square feet. The only house on Athlone that is over three hundred, three thousand square feet is on the south side. So if we look at the proportion of the proposed build, a floor space index of point seven-four will create a much larger overall size of building in relation to lot compared to most of the other builds in the immediate neighborhood. And I'm speaking for the, my, I wanted to start to say that a petition opposed to the ten Athlone proposal was submitted dated March eleventh, signed by fifteen neighbors, one who then uh, agreed to be neutral. And I'm speaking for that group of concerned neighbors as we are opposed to the level of overbuilding, which we believe is not in keeping with the prevailing structures on this street. And that we're concerned that it'll start a new precedent for future builds on the street.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just point out two things. Um, I did note in Ms. Flynn Guglietti's uh, study of
Thank you, I'm finished.
Okay, the, this Committee of Adjustment, the chart that Ms. Flynn Guglietti gave us, I note that of the five on Athlone, four of them are on the, or sorry, uh, three of them are on the odd side of this, the odd number, five, seven, and fifteen. There are two, it's number six and number twenty, which are on the same side of the street as, as you and the applicants. So, um, but I hear your argument that the lots are bigger, smaller, but that we reflected in the lot coverage. Small lot, smaller house. Um, one other thing I was gonna point out, uh, when your husband was speaking, uh, slipped my mind. Okay, it may come back to me. So thank you for those submissions. Uh, in terms of the other neighbors here, uh, who would like to, Paul, is, does everyone want to speak when you're?
Yeah, sorry, Chair, they all, they all wanted to speak, so I'm gonna start from the top if that's okay with you, or did you?
Robert Gardner at eighteen, might as well go in order. Okay, Mr. Gardner.
Speak. I would also like to speak.
Sure. Mr. Gardner, go ahead. Uh, just perhaps keep in mind that we don't want to hear, you know, a lot of the same things we heard from your neighbors, number twelve, who are the most affected.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair and the members of the committee for the opportunity. I'm gonna make this really short because I feel like I'm funny story and the punchline has already been given. Um, but you'll see my report dated March sixteenth, two thousand twenty. It's a seven-page report, four pages of text and three pages of Excel spreadsheets. My focus is in particular on, and I'm not going to read it, I'm just going to hit the highlights. And if you have any questions, um, my particular focus was exclusively on, on um, variance number two, that I would claim I have reasonable and um, legitimate um, evidence to support the claim that this is a, a, uh, that this is not a minor variance request, it's a major. Now, I'm very aware of the issue of that, that, the crucial definition of minor versus a major. And um, I, my, at the bottom of the first page of my report, what's minor, I detail my little adventure early in this year about clarifying what this meant. And I, and I, in the absence of any arbitrary clear standard of what was major or minor, and a single point of, of um, statistical reference, I thought perhaps some tribunal decisions, um, L-PAT and T-LAB might give an exploration of, of the issues of concern and see how the, 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 the appeal boards decided the issue. Now, I found varying FSI scores ranging from um, a low of four point zero that was disallowed up to over eight that was allowed, and it seemed, and to clarify that, I called the Committee of Adjustment staff and, and they reminded me again that each variance would be judged on its own merits, not precedents. But on the particular situation, the peculiar of that situation and that rebuild. Um, so I, I got curious and I began to think of, well, what, how do I deal with this? I was seriously disturbed by the, the plans that I saw back in January. And I didn't have any statistical proof, so I became curious and I started to do a survey. And part of my interest was to try to unravel the mystery of FSI. And to a novice, this is a bit of a headbanger, but once I was able to solve it and identify how it was calculated, I found that I could draw data from the, a website of the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, property descriptions um, in the neighborhood, and I would be able to do FSI scores for the neighborhood. And again, I was not trying to prove any point, but I was convinced that if there was a, a point to prove, it would show itself in the analysis. So, um, I just plunked on property descriptions up and down the streets. Um, and I, and I found both, um, both with the chem- um, the, the, the traditional homes as well as the contemporary rebuilds. Um, and I, and I didn't cherry pick, I didn't pick anything, I just went from home to home. I'm hoping that the story would reveal itself, and um, I discovered, um, nothing surprising on the north side, pretty well same property sizes and universal um, gross floor. But when I crossed the road, I discovered something that not many people in the neighborhood would appreciate or even know. The property sizes in this neighborhood value or change and are, are, are varied extremely. Um, on the north side, we've got forty, around an average of forty thousand square feet, but across the way, it averages forty-seven hundred square feet. So this particular applicant's um, house, around three thousand, on the north side of Athlone, has a very different FSI and a very different impact, um, harmful in particular than on the north, than on the south side. So I did a survey, and you can see the results um, of my survey on pages um, five through seven.
Yep.
You can see um, how I've isolated um, street by street and house by house, um, lot sizes and building size. And so contrary to the claim that this fits um, you know, nicely with the contemporary as well as traditional. In fact, um, this, the FSI on this particular application ranks really high. Um, there are not many FSI calculations that are larger than this one in the immediate neighborhood. Now, we could have gone further, but with the, the impact database limits me um, to one hundred free uh, property descriptions um, per calendar year. So, but I felt that I'm stopping at number seventy-five, I did both streets of, both sides of Athlone, both sides of um, the adjacent part of Edgemore to the north, and both sides of um, Glenroy adjacent to the south, which would give me enough of an argument, but enough of a picture to know if this was truly, truly um, uh, a minor in relation to everything else. And, and it's my claim um, that in protect, uh, I have gathered meaningful and reasonable proof, statistical proof, that this um, uh, FSI statistical proof, that this, um, uh, FSI calculation should be reasonably considered to swing into major territory rather than minor. And again, I'm aware of the distinction, there's no clear demarcation, but I'm aware that I've got evidence that I believe swings this into a cautionary issue of, of major. And I'm also, um, aware that there's no supportive evidence that this larger variance request is absolutely necessary and no evident hardship or circumstance, um, peculiar to this property or building that would make a, a relatively minor rollback and FSI impossible or unrealistic. So it's my claim that, um, I've, I've created enough substantial evidence to paint this as a, as a major variance rather than a minor, both in terms of fact and context with the neighborhood, um, FSIs, and also because of its major rather than minor impact on adjacent neighborhoods, in particular number twelve. So I would argue that there's leeway, um, between reasonable people to, to consider moving the FSI calculation on this particular property and this particular rebuild back into, um, something that could be reasonably considered to be, um, minor.
Thank you.
That's my evidence.
Very good presentation. Uh, I let you go a little over because you touched on some very good things. In terms of your chart, I'd just ask you one question. Have you seen page six of McMillan LLP's, uh, letter with their chart? Would you, is, is that chart accurate? Is it just, you picked out the low ones and Ms. Flynn Guglietti's picked up the high ones, or is you have problems with this? Because you did a lot of work here, I'm just wondering if you have, if you look at this letter and we see that there's, I guess in terms of new, new builds, there was five that she's pointed out for us, and they're all above from point six eight to point, uh, eight.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'm a, yeah, I'm a, I'm a novice with all this, and it was a headbanger to try to figure this out, and-
Yeah, no, you've done a lot of work.
Now, but let me give you an idea, um, I, I was limited to a database that offered me free data. Now, there's a part of the impact database that I think will give you, um, it's a pay-per-service, a look at properties, but the property descriptions could be up to fifty dollars to get the details. So I didn't feel like spending multiple thousands when the free part of the database gave me, um, a comprehensive view of what's happening now. It didn't give me overtime, so I, I, and, and, and I'm careful with the term cherry picking, um, but all I did was go up and down the, the streets, clicking on anything, um, not trying to prove a particular point, but trusting that the current conditions, not historical but current, and, and seventy-five area surveys, would be sufficient to give me an indication of this, if the meter ticked into major or minor. So again, um, she's, uh, the, the, the original request, or the, you're talking about a chart that was done, um, that, they, they've picked, um, high, uh, FSIs over time. Um, I did try to sort that out too, on the, on the, on the back of, or at the bottom of, uh, my page four, I've got the matter of precedence. So I was concerned about those that had, um, comparable FSIs, in particular at number fifteen, which had an FSI of, of, um, number eighty.
Yeah.
And so, I just realized that precedents are interesting, but unless you, you, you drill down on that particular precedent and get a sense of, um, the, the property size and the, and the peculiars, um, the precedents themselves, um, are, are, are essentially interesting but meaningless. Um, in particular, and I'm just gonna go a little bit maybe-
You know what, I think you answered my question, I, I'm, you know, you're getting into new material. But I, I think, so you did point out, yeah, you did point out that there is a difference between the MPAC, which counts basements and the garages, so there is maybe that, that issue. But, uh, thank you for that answer and for your presentation, you did a lot of work on this, and I commend you. Uh, I just remember the other thing I forgot to mention after, uh, twelve Athlone, Mr. Olia spoke. Okay, now I missed, okay, it'll come back to me again. So do we have, who's the next, the next, we have another speaker? I guess the next one on the list, Paul, is Paul and Jennifer Buttigieg, at twenty-two. Says they're likely in opposition.
Yes.
Would you like to, uh, weigh in briefly?
I will. Um, some of my five minutes was gonna be a bit of a repetition, so I'll delete that from my speech. Uh, my name is Paul Buttigieg, um, I reside at twenty-two Athlone Drive with my wife Jennifer. I'm going to ask you today to consider deferral of this matter in order to hold the applicants to the condition of the January sixteenth, twenty twenty board decision, which was to meet with concerned neighbors. On January twenty-second, we received an email from the applicants noting that they will not meet with any of the neighbors. In that same email, they also indicated that they would sincerely address letters of objections with their architect. Neither of these have happened, as what you have in front of you today is the exact same set of plans that was submitted back in January. There have been no changes. So what we have here today is a whole lot of fuss over something that I consider could have been and should have been remedied by a group or street meeting. Regarding the applicant's list of support letters that they have filed, I want to say that the timelines of these letters do not match, uh, the, the, the submissions, the two submissions. These letters were only recently sought on June eleventh, thirteenth, and fourteenth, which is long after the applicants, uh, sent in their, uh, their, their papers. The applicants went door to door seeking support after it became very apparent that they had failed to meet the condition of that deferral, and that was to meet with concerned neighbors. And they're also aware that letters of concern are also filed with the Committee of Adjustment. They should have that in front of you. Uh, as far as the building not being a good fit, Robert's covered this in, uh, great detail. I'm telling you and I'm supporting Robert, and you have our petition of March eleventh, you have our letter of March sixteenth. We stand behind these letters, we stand behind this information, we believe we have conclusively shown that this is a major variance of point seven four. I think it's time to go back and rethink this application. We've also written that if you're committed to it, you'll always find common ground. To this, we want to bring to your attention that our street, Athlone Drive, is a terrific street, we have some great neighbors, you know, we all get along, and have something like this happen where there's, you know, a little bit of animosity or conflict is, uh, it's really upsetting. Um, and what I want to bring to your attention is that previously, uh, we had street meetings, and they were held for new builds at number five and number seven Athlone Drive. And the meetings were held at the Civic Center with the assistance of our local counselor. At those meetings, common ground, concessions, agreements, were all made to assist the homeowners who had concerns, and specifically, they were the homeowners at, homeowners at number three, five, and nine Athlone. So the buildings at number five and number seven got built, they're beautiful new houses, and all they had to consider was some minor modifications, and the adjacent neighbors at three, five, and nine all received something acceptable too, because harms to them were reduced. So, saying that, I'm asking, why haven't we been able to do that with number ten Athlone? It's something that, you know, should have been done, we could have handled this, uh, you know, properly. Um, if this application is approved today, I will tell you that it's being bumped back seventeen feet, it's going to be a two-story structure being bumped seventeen feet. I understand what Mark and Sharon are saying, and it's, um, in our opinion, that it'll be forever disruptive in terms of size, block light, reduced privacy, elimination of soft landscape, landscape, and decreased green space. So that's what I want to say, and I want to say if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, so I remember what I was gonna say, um, you know, you're right, in terms of let Ms. Flynn Guglietti deal with the purpose of the, it's kind of late in the day to start, we've been dealing with this a half an hour almost, to start asking for a deferral, but you're correct, there was the purpose of the deferral back in January, and we'll let Ms. Flynn Guglietti respond to that. But in terms of making changes, I think I just wanted to point out, uh, to the people at twelve, that's what I remembered what I was gonna say, in terms of, we have no ability, especially given COVID, they, we, and if you heard in my opening remarks, we will not allow revisions today. So we don't come back like in the old days, perhaps to, to cut something down and say, uh, we either, we have it before us, we're either gonna approve that or, or refuse the application in its entirety. We don't start, uh, designing on the fly and making deals, or even cutting them down. So what's before us is either gonna get approved or rejected, as opposed to being reduced. That, like you say, it ties in with what you had to say, that was something that the applicant could have done during the time of the deferral, but they chose not to do so. So who's the next speaker? We have, um, Heather Armstrong, or that's the same, oh, it's another address. Is Heather Armstrong here, Paul?
Yes, hi, I don't, I'm here, I don't need to speak today, I'm just here in opposition.
Okay, fair enough. Your neighbors have said a lot for you. Okay, and Colin Curry, I have noted here in support.
Yes, I am. How are you today? Uh, yeah, I'd like to, uh, say a few words, if that's okay. So, uh, my name is Colin Curry, I live at seven Athlone on the south side, and I've lived here for about approximately nine years. And, uh, just to give you a little bit of quick background, uh, I've been in the residential and commercial real estate business for about thirty years, and I, under professional appraisal designation as well. I've appraised thousands of homes in my career, and I certainly understand the development process well. And, uh, you know what, there's some great points on either side, but, uh, again, from my perspective, we have a direct line of sight to ten Athlone. We've reviewed the design and generally conforms very well to the neighborhood. The owners are not looking for any side yard or height variances and/or negligible front variances. And the proposed home is roughly a hundred and fifty square feet smaller than that, than our house here at seven Athlone. Albeit, again, the lot size is a little bit different, but we're talking roughly about, uh, ten or eleven feet difference in the rear yard. I have a twenty-foot patio and a badminton court. So they all have a twenty-foot patio and two-thirds of a badminton court. So let's put this in relative terms overall. Um, again, we, we and I obtained, I think it was fifteen to sixteen letters of support from the vast majority of the neighbors that are directly impacted. And I wanted to say that within the sixty meters and directly impacted with this build, and, uh, and furthermore, most of these homes on this street were built in the fifties, and we believe reinvestment is expected and desirable. Relevant to approvals in the neighborhood and our street, we believe that variances are minor, and by no means, by no means, a super adequacy is this home a super adequacy. So we're in favor of the proposal, we believe their home is desirable addition to our street, and I would ask the committee to approve their plans as they stand.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Curry, I have a quick question for you, given you're a real estate agent, and you live on the street, I know you live on the odd side of the street, and Mr. Gardner, in his presentation drew, drew a distinction between the two sides of the street, which I'm gonna ask Ms. Guglietti to respond to, and how her numbers match up with his. But in terms, do you agree there's a difference between the, uh, two sides of the street?
Well, there's a difference in the lot size, it's just a little bit deeper by about, uh, twelve, thirteen feet, depends on how you calculate it. Our building envelope is about, uh, foot and a half to two feet deeper. So net-net, it's about a ten-foot difference. And furthermore, with, uh, with Robert's survey, he did a wonderful draw, job, I commend him, that's a lot of work. Um, I, I measured our house actually, and it's about, it, his, uh, his, his numbers are a little bit off, we're about twenty-nine hundred and fifty-six square feet versus twenty-eight sixty-four, but, you know, it's a measure of a couple of percent, but, uh, I think there is enough empirical evidence in the general neighborhood that would support this, um, density, without question, in my experience. And you know what, I, I've seen this time and time again, and again, I respect the neighbors wanting to keep the smaller homes and be in the fifties, but we, we need to advance, and, uh, again, I think they're building a very tasteful infill project, and, uh, again, we're fully supported, and again, I would state that most of the neighbors that are directly impacted will, are fully supported. And this is no vote, by the way, against twelve Athlone. We, we're cordial with our neighbors, we like our neighbors, and, uh, it's unfortunate it had to come to this, but again, just want to echo our support.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, um, so we'll return now to, uh, Mary Flynn Guglietti to respond to the neighbors' concerns, uh, given there's so many speakers, to give you a little bit of leeway if you need a little extra time. Uh, but if you can please, as I mentioned to Mr. Curry, if you can touch in your response to Mr. Gardner's statistics, I know they were taken from MPAC and there's some differences involved, um, as well as just responding to the other concerns of the neighbors. And about also about the issue about the purpose of the, one of the speakers mentioned, I believe it was, uh, Heather Armstrong, about the fact that there were supposed to be meetings and consultation which appeared not to have taken place, but-
Thank you very much, sir. Um, perhaps maybe I could start off by taking everyone to my letter of, just pull it up for you, it's June eighteenth, and I believe it's called cover letter number four.
Yes.
If that's of assistance. And you'll see, sir, that in there I have, at number one, the general intent and purpose of the official plan. Uh, the reason why I take you to this particular point is with respect to the issue of, do you look at the other side of the street? And you'll recall that under OP three twenty, there were major amendments made to section four point one point five of the official plan. And that was taking into consideration the general neighborhood and the immediate neighborhood. And if you look at the first paragraph, that first paragraph says, "The physical character of the geographic neighborhood includes," and I am quoting from the official plan, "both the physical characteristics of the entire geographic area in proximity to the proposed development," so you have to look at that, "and the physical characteristics of the properties that face the same street as the proposed development in the same block." So it is not telling you to look at one side of the street. The official plan tells you that when you are looking at the smaller neighborhood, that it does include the properties across the street. The other thing you have to take into consideration is that the FSIs are a percentage of the lot. It is not, uh, just a number, it's not just the gross floor area. It's both the coverage and the FSI are directly in relation to the lot. So that is very critical, and that's why they are done as a percentage. So it does take into consideration the size of the lot. Now, the other important thing that you have to, uh, bear in mind with respect to, um, Mr. Gardner's presentation, and I do applaud him, because I've worked with a number of planners over the years, and they are always struggling with trying to get the proper information. But both the committee and as well the T-LAB and the L-PAD, the OMB is and was, uh, have always had difficulty dealing with the impact numbers. The impact numbers don't deal with basements, they don't deal with garages. There's inaccuracies with respect to, uh, houses that were built back in the fifties getting accurate numbers. Therefore, it's always preferred that you look at, at building permit applications because in today's day and age, every little square inch is counted, and as well the committee of adjustment decisions, which one is able to get from the, um, from the committee of adjustment. You can pull old ones, as you, as you are well aware, sir. And that is the only time that we're really looking at apples to apples. And, and you'll note that in the chart that was put together, that that chart only included the ones that were the size of what's being requested and bigger, only because there were so many of them, there were so many of them. So as you can see, this is really a much more accurate reflection of the GFA because it takes into consideration specific numbers. And it's only on that basis that we know that we are comparing apples to apples. Regrettably, the impact information doesn't have the same level of accuracy for the reasons Mr. Gardner pointed out himself, in that, you know, they don't include the same things. So what we are really truly trying to get a sense of, what's in the general neighborhood, what's in a specific neighborhood, I submit to you that our chart is the one that you should rely upon. And it is that chart that gives you the character of the neighborhood in terms of the FSIs. And those are with respect to, to both Athlone Street itself as well as the general neighborhood. And therefore, it is direct proof of the FSIs and the coverage in the neighborhood that are appropriate and accurate. And, uh, as I said, I do commend Mr. Gardner for the efforts that he took, but unfortunately, we all know that the impact information is not accurate. And then for him to try to take that information, make it relevant to us, you know, there's a certain amount of subjective guessing, and, and, and I just think that we really can't count on that as being as accurate as the information that we've provided, and would ask that you prefer that. Now, the next point that I would like to make is with respect, and this is going back to the original hearing on January the sixteenth. Now, at that hearing, when our client realized that there were individuals that were in opposition to the application, they did themselves request the, uh, uh, the deferral. And actually, at that meeting, they stepped outside with Mr. Buttigieg and as well with the owners of number twelve. And with their architect, they went through the plans, answered, and then subsequent to the meeting, they did try to set up on two occasions through formal emails, uh, meetings with number- meetings with number twelve. And number twelve actually wrote back and said that they will not meet. The difficulty for Mr. Budichek is that he believes that the only kind of meeting that counts is a meeting that would be a general street meeting. Our clients chose instead to take their plans and to go and meet with individuals so that they could walk through the plans with them, so that the neighbors that they dealt with totally and completely understood the plans, the variances that are being sought, and have an opportunity to ask questions and decide whether or not they wanted to support it. Some chose not to say anything. Some decided to support it. And as a matter of fact, one of the people that had signed the petition had decided to change her position because she felt that she had more fulsome information, and that at the time that she signed the petition, she felt that she had not been given appropriate information from the people that were walking around with the petition. So to suggest that our client did not have fulsome meetings with the neighborhood, I think is really not an appropriate assessment of what actually in fact took place. What took place was a neighbor going to their neighbors and making sure that people understood the plans. Often with a petition, we don't really know what information was given to those individuals. They're not present for us to ask questions of them, and so we don't know how much weight. And normally, we don't give a great deal of weight to petitions, but rather to people that have taken the time to write the letters. Now, with respect to number twelve, and it's regrettable that they did not want to meet with our clients to go through the plans, but not for the failure of our client not making every effort to do so.
So, sorry, if I can just interject. So you're saying that the people at twelve refused, said that they did not wish to meet?
That is correct. They said they refused to meet.
And if you could please also wrap up, because you're now at seven minutes.
I know. I'm sorry, but there were a lot of speakers, so I apologize for that, sir. But there is actually communication from my client on file dealing directly with their efforts. They've given the dates that they approached them, and they've given a copy of what they asked and the response that was received from number twelve. So the difficulty is, you can't force someone to meet with you, but they certainly made every effort.
Yep.
Now, I do want to talk directly with respect to the comments that were made by number twelve. And one of the main concerns seems to be a bathroom window. And I can only say that bathroom windows are considered secondary windows. Usually, most people have blinds on those windows in order to provide privacy, and I would imagine that that is going to be the case for number twelve. There is no right to review in Ontario. And with respect to this particular application, they can go back the depth that they're going back as of right with the two-story, even if there was a reduced coverage. And with respect to the windows, those windows could be located within that depth the way that they are totally in compliance with the zoning bylaw. The side yards comply, and therefore, I think that the concerns that they've raised are different than the way that they are today. But I don't think that the concerns are all founded. And if I could just take one note, sir, I would like to double-check my notes that I made of the submissions. What I'm most concerned about from the objectors that have been raised is they seem to be taking more of a view of numbers. And they haven't provided us with any direct or relevant information with respect to the impacts other than the ones that we discussed for number twelve. I would just take you to my letter with respect to the four tests that I set out.
Yeah, please, please wrap up.
Yes, a quote from Mr. Lee in one of the leading cases.
Yeah, we've read that.
Right, and so it isn't an exercise just in numbers. You have to actually look at what is the impact. And I submit to you that with respect to the impacts, I do not think that those impacts really are ones that are going to be felt by the neighbors. It's really, in this particular case, it's about the numbers. And the numbers, we've been told time and again, it's not a robotic exercise with respect to numbers. So I would submit to you, sir, that with respect to the very fulsome discussions our clients had with the immediate neighbors, they didn't have a street meeting, but they did meet with many of their neighbors, that they have full support of the variances that they're requesting, and that they do meet the four tests.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Guglietti, or in fact, for any of the neighbors, before you bring the matter into committee for deliberation and decision? No? No one has any further questions? Thank you, neighbors, and thank you applicant, agent, for your very good presentations. And now the committee will have to make a decision on this. We note there are three variances, I believe. I don't believe there are any... There's forestry. Is there forestry conditions? I don't believe so.
Forestry's in...
Forestry have a letters, but we don't have a condition. Is that correct? Oh, they were looking for... Oh, that was the earlier one, I think, for the deferral was back in January.
That's correct, and that their concerns have been resolved, and that's in the letter that you can find from our client.
Okay. Okay.
The attached copy of the email.
Right, okay, so we're going to take this into committee now. So members, someone ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, by the way, I have a bit of a preamble here. I'm compelled by a couple of things. One is the fact that this proposed house is on a footprint, if you will. Permitted coverage only slightly larger than allowed, thirty-seven percent versus thirty-three percent. Skipping to variance three, this proposed dwelling is about one foot closer to the street than the required front yard setback. When you look at requested variance two and considering the other variances, variance two is almost an unavoidable consequence, given the fact that the building is basically the size of the allowable footprint. And the street, the front yard setback is only minimally changed. There's no rear yard setback variances, side yard setback requirements, no height variance requirements. So all in all, I could and can and will argue that in their collectivity, the variances are minor in nature. I'm also strongly compelled by the immediately impacted homeowners are in support of this project. And again, I find the variances minor. I find the other three tests under the planning act are met as well. And my motion is for approval without conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do you have a second there for Mr. Taylor's motion?
Sorry, I'll second there.
Thank you, Ms. McCloskey. All in favor? Okay, you have unanimous approval. The application has been approved. Thank you, applicant. Thank you, neighbors.
Thank you very much, members of the committee and Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item number seventeen, which is an application that was deferred from the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty hearing, twenty-five Jackson. This is an application to construct a two-story rear addition and a partial third-story addition. We have a covering letter about revisions made since the deferral. We have supporting materials, comparable properties, maps and pictures. We have an email, a communication from planning dated February the fourteenth recommending refusal. That was prior to the last hearing. I don't believe, I don't know if we have anything from them since then.
Those comments are still valid.
Those comments are still valid? Okay. We have a letter of support from seventeen Jackson. And in terms of speakers, we only have one registered speaker, being the applicant on file, Katerina Ortekova. Are you here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I've just outlined what's before us. I see we have a letter from you.
Yes, I heard there are...
Is this, I don't see a date on this letter. Is this a revised letter since the last application? Could you please walk us through, though, as to what's happened since the deferral?
Yes, thank you. So the deferral, unfortunately, was as a result of our contact at City Planning not sending us the sign for our window. And unfortunately, we weren't aware that we needed one. So when we got to the committee, we ended up being deferred. But now, obviously, we have to sign up, so we are good with that. But nothing actually has changed since that last date, other than the reason why we were deferred. So at that time, we had, before that meeting, we had spoken with planning, and they had written that note, and we had made the changes that you see there. So essentially, what we're asking for is the three variances. And after speaking with planning, we had made a change on the first variance from the FSI going from zero-point-seven-nine down to zero-point-seven-three. We also altered variance three, modifying the lot coverage from thirty-eight percent down to thirty-four percent. We have...
I thought I see thirty-seven. I don't think you see thirty-six percent on the new hearing notice. Thirty... I see thirty...
So variance three has gone down from thirty-eight percent to thirty-four percent.
Okay, on my notice, I'm looking at, maybe I'm looking the wrong one. It says it's thirty-seven, thirty-six percent of the width of the wall. Am I looking at the right?
On the zoning bylaw notice, you mean?
The minor, the notice. It says variance one, thirty-four percent. Variance number...
Thirty-four.
Number variance two, FSI of seventy-three, which you say you brought down. Item three says that the, at least on mine, has a height of seven meters for thirty-six percent of the width of the wall, not thirty-four. I see thirty-six. Do you see that?
Yep.
Yes, that is very interesting, because that is not... The notice that I have that I downloaded just this morning is, it's actually not in that order. My notice starts with the FSI, then goes to the permitted...
You're looking at the building review, the building review, which is a different number.
I see. Okay, so on whatever I have, it says the proposed lot coverage is thirty-four percent, which is what I was looking at. So I'm sorry, if it's thirty-six, then I will speak to that.
Yeah, the exterior main height. Well, that's what I see on the notice. And then it says the last variance, item four, is the maximated height of our rear exterior wall is no less than sixty percent. It's forty-six percent of the total width of the walls.
Right, so those two are referring to, on the piece of paper that I have, variance two regarding the exterior main walls. And we had spoken with City Planning on that. Our architect didn't quite understand that variance, and so he had had a conversation with them, and they actually said to leave that variance as is, because the only way for us to comply would be to put in a mansard roof, which doesn't fit the style of the home. So they recommended that we leave the design as is in order to not change the look of the home to a way that didn't fit the kind of Tudor style.
Okay, so my next question for you is the staff report dated February fourteenth, where the planning department is asking us to refuse the application.
Right.
Have you discussed with City Planning why they wrote that? And do they, were advised by staff that that has not been retracted and that retracted? And since you haven't made, that's still before us. That's still City Planning's position.
Right, right. And I, we did speak with City Planning, and I understand that. I would like to point out that the modifications that we are hoping to get approved is a rear extension, which is at the same degree of distance from the, from the house, the ten feet that we're hoping to add, is the same as our direct neighbor. So we're not going further than our neighbor, and it's smaller than many of the homes on the block. In addition, what City Planning is saying they have an issue with is that the front elevation presents as a third story. However, you can see that many of the homes in the immediate vicinity, less than two hundred meters around us, several of them present as third stories. In addition, some of them are not even in keeping with the style of the home. So we have, we're maintaining the front elevation. We're extending the existing lines of the home. In fact, the home will look very much the same. We have a flat roof, which you can see in a photo, which we showed on Feb. twenty-seventh. The roof is flat, and we will just be capping that. In addition, on the front elevation, the dormers appear to be very forward, making... You can't really see that the dormers will in fact be quite far back. So on the front elevation, it appears flat, whereas in the two-D, in the three-D, it won't appear so much as a third story, because the dormers are quite far set back.
Is that something you changed? Have you changed that since the last, since they wrote this memo on February the twenty-seventh?
No, we...
Because they're saying the opposite of what you're saying. They're saying that most homes that have a third, partial third story have it at the back so that from the front, it still presents like a two-story home. And they're claiming that what you're proposing doesn't do that, and that accordingly, the front, proposed front elevation is not fit in the existing massing scale and elevations on the street. So they're saying that, they're saying that it looks like a three-story home from the front, where others have partial third stories at the back, so it still looks like a two-story at the front. So that's a concern.
Right, and, right, right. And unfortunately, we have to respectfully disagree with that, which is why I sent in all those photos. There is a house about a hundred meters from here on Thirty-three Willington, which is pretty much the identical house to ours, which has a third story actually at the front of the home. Ours won't look like that. It'll be set back from about halfway down the house. So from the street, it will actually even be harder to see. And some of the homes that I sent, most of them, the third story actually starts right at the front of the house, which is not the case with this house. So unfortunately, we have, you know, from walking around the neighborhood, we see homes that are, that absolutely present as third stories. And we feel that what we have added, in fact, doesn't look as much as a third story as those homes.
So I see that one that you gave us the picture of here. Is that, how, where does this fit in? Is this not on the same street, right? The one, the houses you're showing us that look like, that are three-story at the front?
Right. If you look on the little... Right, if you look on the map that I have there, you can see it's color-coded, third story visible on front elevation.
Yeah.
And then the other one is the floor space index greater than zero-point-seven. So there, and then if you look down at seventeen Jackson, they have a window, third-story window.
Dormer, yeah.
Yeah, so I would also just like to highlight, you did mention that we had a letter of support. Actually, that's a document with twelve letters of support. I just sent them all in one for easier upload. We have both abutting neighbors, including all, yeah, all three facing neighbors, as well as seven additional. And I'd just like to highlight that these are neighbors that have lived here, like the one across the street, for three decades. They're very invested in the look of the street and the neighborhood. So they're not, you know, renters or tenants or people just willing to sign. They really feel that what we have designed is in maintaining the look of the street and also the immediate vicinity and the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you very much. Committee members, do you have any questions for the applicant? Or are we ready for a decision?
Chair, I just like clarification from the applicant. It appears that the planning department comments predate some of the revisions you made. Is that correct? As I'm looking at it, for instance, the...
A minor.
The planning department memo refers to your very first variance for lot area coverage at thirty-eight percent. And I believe you've revised it to thirty-four percent. So I think that's where some of the confusion lies, and that the planning department memo, I think, may be out of date with the revised plans that you submitted.
Yeah, I asked, I asked, and Madam Secretary Treasurer said that letter still stands. I don't know if that just means because it wasn't retracted, or have they considered it and sent a memo and said, yes, our comments made in February, notwithstanding the changes. And I agree with Mr. Palmer, that's a bit of a significant reduction from thirty-eight to thirty-four. Thirty-three is permitted. That is a significant reduction. I guess you haven't reduced the floor space index.
Well, the floor space index was reduced from point-seven-nine to point-seven-three, which two homes on our street alone have greater than that, and there are several...
Okay, so it just, you can give us more information, but you're answering that question. So I agree with Mr. Palmer. There are somewhat significant, it's gone down point-six in the FSI. And the coverage has gone down to almost complying. So should we not have received a revised, either an email saying, yeah, we've considered the changes, and we still think it should be refused?
I mean, I had the same question as you, Mr. Chair. The report does talk about the floor space index, but they do also talk about the front elevation, the appearance of a three-story home. So those variances... So those variances in terms of the mass scale and elevation on the street has not changed. So if I read that correctly, then their opinion would still be that they can't support the application in its present form.
Okay, so planning would have been advised that this application was coming back before us and that this letter was here. And they did not give further comments.
Correct.
And Timor Chadry is still with the city?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we have our answer we raised. But sorry, 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 sorry. You, you can't speak unless we ask you a question. You made your presentation.
Oh, I apologize, okay.
Committee now. Thank you.
Well, I, I'm concerned that the uh, the outstanding issue remains on, on the presentation of the House. The applicant's view that it's uh, it's very attractive and uh, which I'm sure it will be. And this city's view that it's uh, not in keeping with the neighborhood. So to me, that's an unresolved issue and it's significant. And uh, I'm gonna make a motion that this application be refused.
Okay, do we have a second here for that motion?
Is there, is there an opportunity for us to get?
Sorry, you can't speak right now. We're in committee. We're in a motion. Okay?
Okay.
So I, I would just point out that, you know, it's, we, just like in the last one, we can't change. We have to either approve or refuse. Uh, I agree that community planning did make mention of it presenting like a three-story, but the applicant has given us copies of other houses, and I was wondering how far away they are, but there is one on the, on the very street, which is the, I think the first one. Uh, where is it here? Seventeen? Or no, there's this one on Jackson. Seventeen Jackson. So that's right on the street as well as others. I'm not sure if it's the same zoning restriction uh, here. Uh, but you're right, the, it does stand. It does, the letter does.
I, I would be quite happy if the city had subsequently said.
Yes.
We've talked to the applicant, we've reconsidered, we're okay.
Yes.
Not having that, I've got a personal problem.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion for refusal.
I know you're in the motion. I did get a confirmation that planning's report does still stand.
Okay. So we have a motion for refusal. Do you have a second here for that motion?
I will second that motion based on um. Yes, I will uh.
So you're in favor, you're, you second the motion to refuse the application?
Oh, there we go. Sorry, I think I was on mute there. Um, yes, I uh, I second the motion based on um, planning staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Uh, I can't, I have to abstain to avoid a tie. So the motion carries two to one with one, with opposed to the motion. Okay, so the motion carries two to one, the application's refused with uh, and I am abstaining. Okay, so the application has been refused. If you'd like to call and speak to staff tomorrow, uh, please do so.
Thank you.
But the application has been refused. Okay, thank you. So number eighteen, thirty-two sixty-three Lakeshore Boulevard West. Uh, okay. We have David McKay, agent, and Tracy Tims in opposition at one-ten Alder Crescent. Uh, you're both present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just bear with me one second while I get to this item. Yeah, this is an application for a, to legalize and maintain an apartment building. Uh I think we had an objection that was withdrawn here. Uh, so it's an apartment building and it's, it got, this is a, it has, there's four dwellings in the basement, and this matter was def- deferred, was before us January the thirtieth, at which time it was deferred. And we have the notice, survey plans, minutes, order to comply, site-specific bylaws, two covering letters, a planning rationale, supporting materials, uh, more, a lot more supporting materials, a transportation study, uh, memo from transportation, and several letters of support, and several letters of, a lot of letters of opposition. So is uh, David McKay's here, is Tracy Tims? Are you present?
I'm present, yeah. This is Tracy.
Okay, so let's start off with Mr. McKay. Uh, if you can make, give us a uh, brief presentation. And let us know what happened, the purpose of the deferral, and what's happened since the deferral, if anything.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair members of the committee. My name is David McKay. I am a registered professional planner with NHBC and represent the applicant. Um, the application uh, before you um, was deferred to address concerns from the neighbors, uh, including Mr. Uh, Tim. And you'll notice that there are a number of letters uh, that, of objection that have since been withdrawn subject to um, the conditions attached to Mr. Tim's letter uh, of Schedule A being uh, applied by the committee uh, to the approval. Uh, we uh, there, there were some concerns with regards to, this is an existing building, existing structure has existed in place for uh, decades. Uh, the portion of the um, building has been used for apartments uh, in the past. The uh, lower level, uh, which is a basement that's partially sunken uh, was used for non-residential uses, and our client uh, went forward to convert that to apartments to service the uh, adjacent under college student population. And um, obviously, uh, it has dealt with the order to comply uh, with the building department as well as the fire department in terms of upgrades and, and moving things forward. Also, we need to deal with the zoning uh, variances that relate to uh, to that, to finalize the uh, the final um building permit uh, to be issued. Uh, with regards to the three-year neighbors, there were a number of windows that were originally proposed uh, that faced into the yard that were existing. Uh, we have uh, agreed with them to remove those windows, so there's no overlook uh, concerns or light concerns uh, coming from the building. And those are uh, depicted on the March twelfth plans that we submitted uh, and uh, reference to Mr. Tim's uh, um, conditions. So uh, we have also uh, reviewed the transportation comments. Um, they were agreeable uh, to uh, the approval of the variant subject to the condition that our client enter into an agreement with the tenants uh, at the time of leasing, noting that there was limited parking and were acceptable of that condition as well. Um, as I noted in my planning justification letter, uh, is our opinion that the proposal uh, meets the four tests uh, of Planning Act. I've gone through exceptional detail uh, discussing that. Um, and uh, in, in a number of cases, the variances are, are uh, relating to the existing building itself, not complying to a bylaw that was brought forward uh, to implement the avenue intensification along Lakeshore. And uh, so that's um, I won't bore you with any further details, but you have the answer and the questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McKay. Um. Any of, have any questions uh, for the agents? Okay, so let's hear from uh, Tracy Tims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee. My name is Tracy Tims, and I'm the owner and occupant of one-ten Alder Crescent, which abuts the subject property to the rear. Uh, I think at this point, I'm informally representing my neighbors at one-oh-eight and one-oh-six, who also entered and then withdrew objections conditional on the uh, on Schedule A, which I'll discuss.
Sorry, who did you say you're representing? The neighbors at one-oh-eight, one-oh-six?
One-oh-eight, one-oh-six, yes.
You have something in writing from them that you're representing them, or have they written in?
No, 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 no. It's just informally. They're not here to speak.
Okay, okay. So you're here without anything. You're here, you're here on your, you're right next door. You're uh, you're certainly affected.
Yep, I, I coordinate closely with them. Okay, so um.
So what are your concerns? I guess this was an industrial building that was illegally, was converted to a residential without having building permits or approvals or anything. So is it, so what's your, what's your issue with this?
I mean, that's yes and no.
What's the nature of your business? You're building an industrial building or an apartment building?
A single-family dwelling.
Okay.
The, the three neighbors and myself are, are in, in a residential area, single-family dwellings.
Okay, and this gentleman, the subject property is in the industrial zone. It's abutting an industrial zone?
It's in the avenue, yeah. It's in the Lakeshore Avenue zone, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so uh, so when you, when you look at the subject building from our yards, it seems to have an auxiliary structure or garage located against the rear lot line. But the structure is actually connected to the main building via a common basement. Uh, the, the structure contains windows that directly overlook our yard and our home as well as uh, one-oh-eight, and it's, it's fairly close to one-oh-six uh, due to the property land geometry. Um, when we bought our house in two thousand and two, uh, the main structure, which faces Lakeshore Boulevard, had a small printing business and a residential occupancy on, in, in the second floor. Uh, mixed use. We understood that the rear structure was used as a, a storage shed and was, was unoccupied. And until recently, we saw little to no evidence of human occupancy or activity. I, I can't stress how much this directly overlooks the backyard. It looms right over it. It's at the lot line.
Sorry, Mr. Tims, what was the previous use of the basement?
Uh, this is in the basement. This is, think of, I, I call it the south tower. It's, it's thing that looks like a shed, a digital story that projects out of the basement at the very rear of the building. And the, it, it, we believe it was just used for storage uh, effectively as an auxiliary building, although it was a contiguous part of the main building.
Right.
Just didn't look like that unless you inspected it closely. Um, so up until recently, there was no evidence of occupancy in that, in that structure. Um, the lights were not on at night, and we knew this when we bought it, right, that this was a business. Uh, occupancy was confined to the front part of the building. Um, the applicant renovated the building, uh, placing the residential occupancies in the basement, but also one within that rear structure. So it's, it's above grade, and their windows directly overlook our yard and the yard at one-oh-eight. Um, you know, from a distance of less than a meter. Uh, and it has seriously compromised our sense of privacy. The good news is that the applicant, Mr. Freeny, has recognized our privacy concerns, and he's worked in good faith with us to safeguard our current and future privacy interest. He has committed to infilling the south-facing windows with wall structure, so there's no windows directly overlooking our single-family homes. And uh, to assure that the neighbors' privacy interests, so one-ten, one-oh-eight, one-oh-six are protected in the future, uh, Mr. Freeny and myself have agreed to recommend to the committee respectfully that you adopt of the variance conditions for variances two, three, and eight that we have um, put forward in Schedule A, which is attached to my letter in support of Mr. Freeny uh, of June tenth, twenty twenty. So the, the, the key thing here is that Schedule A. And you'll find in the, in the uh, submitted material that the neighbors at one-oh-eight and one-oh-six have also submitted uh, letters in support of Mr. Freeny's um, of, of application, again, conditional on the option of Schedule A.
Anyway, that's a private agreement, right? So we don't impose that as a can we impose that as a condition? I'm looking at the Woodbowl letter here. Madam Secretary Treasurer, it says uh, our client has recently become aware of concerns raised by one-oh-six and one-ten regarding the application, privacy, south-facing windows at the rear. In order to address their concern, our client agrees to remove and fill the south-facing windows at the rear of the property. Our client is also agreeable to committee imposing a condition to its decision that requires the removal and filling of the south-facing windows at the rear of the property. Can we do that?
So, yeah, may I speak? Is that okay?
I'm asking uh, our secretary treasurer if we can impose a condition like that.
Ah.
It would be difficult to enforce because it's not asked by a city division.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I'm asking you. If we could even impose that as a condition, because we wouldn't be able to enforce that decision. If it's a private agreement, I don't know if you've already done that agreement. Uh, you know, Woodbowl are, they're uh, very reputable. It's not like uh, you have this in writing. Uh, but it seems to be something that should be the subject of a private agreement.
We have both uh, a private agreement, which, but that is not Schedule A. Schedule A, the, the private agreement essentially um, says that both parties will use their best efforts to um.
That's Schedule A to what, sir? What's that Schedule A to? I don't see, where am I looking?
Uh, it, it was just up on the screen.
Was that a letter?
No, I, I have the sched- Schedule A is, is intended to be a set of conditions on the variance approval. Now, I have.
I'd, I'd like to look at that. I'm trying to see where that is. Isn't the supporting materials?
It's the first support letter at the end.
Okay, it's kind of hard to read from up there.
Michael, so if you go to your agenda, there's the first support.
Okay, because there's a whole bunch.
Just scroll down after that.
Okay.
Uh, I've reviewed a number of committee decisions, and I've seen a number that have similar wording on the decisions. This is a little bit lengthier than some, but.
And this is dated June tenth, okay? Just put the committee in entirety. So they're willing to withdraw their objection.
An alternate would be to tie it to the plans.
This has language that does.
First of all, it, it talks about, first of all, the obligation of them to remove the windows and openings, okay? Minor variances, I don't think I've ever seen this, that minor variances two, three, and eight will only apply to the existing structure as long as the same shall remain. I don't know what that means. That means if they take the building down, then they can't do four, four units in the basement in the, of any other property. I don't understand what that is. You, just asking the staff to look along with this and whether they feel this is something we can impose.
And also, there's the condition about removing windows.
Yes.
Those might be building code requirements for uh, living quarters in a basement, so.
You know, I don't know what the other members feel. I feel this is basically a private agreement, and we should not be making reference to this.
So.
But. This is not something the city will enforce or could enforce, so how can we make it a condition? I understand for your protection, uh, your your, uh, maybe your objection if you get, if you get this.
I have, as a matter of fact, reviewed decisions by the committee of adjustment that contain similar language. So I, I don't know what process got that language there, but that, that to me is a matter of fact.
I've been doing this a long time in, in all other, in all the districts, and I can tell you that the city, we do not typically uh, impose conditions, which the city has no control over, or to uh, reflect private agreements. A private agreement is a private agreement. It's great. You're dealing with a reputable uh, law firm. Uh, so you can perhaps take some comfort in that, but I wouldn't be, well, we can hear what Mr. McKay has to say, but uh, this is beyond what Mr. McKay, if he can just confirm for the record that they're gonna do this, and that should be sufficient. Yeah, yeah. Can, Mr. McKay, can you please weigh in on this?
Put it. Oh, thank you. Sorry, sir. I was trying, I would like to speak to this matter, and I appreciate this.
Yeah.
I was put on by staff, so I couldn't help to further this discussion.
Yeah, virtual is different than in person, where you can just pipe in.
Yes, it is, it is. Um, with regards to this matter, uh, we have made the change regarding uh, the Schedule A. Uh, the uh, first item, it is the, you know, depicted on the plans that we are closing those windows. So it's a belts and suspenders component of the, the request. We have no concerns with that, that condition. We have gone through this matter with our bill, our architect, client's architect, and the building department, and those windows are clear story windows and are not required to move building code or fire code. There are window, these are the windows at the rear of the building. There are windows on the sides which are uh, address those building programs. With regards to the second condition, again, uh, the, we are willing to move forward with it. The intent of this is to ensure that if something is changed, there is something, uh, uh, there is something on record with the state in terms of a condition whereby the building department will flag that whether or not the proposal ma- meets the, the variances or not. If our client proceeds to demolish the building, they cannot rely upon the variances that are granted today. That is the intent. So that it gives an opportunity to the residents to review the new application and not get um, hoodwinked, shall we say, by someone moving forward with a different proposition in the future. And so that was the intent of those conditions, and we're quite prepared to accept them, and that's why I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation.
Okay, you may, you're prepared to accept them, and I take it your client and through their law. You may, you're prepared to accept them and I take it your client and through their law firm, Wood Bull, but the issue is whether the city or the Committee of Adjustment can include that or any part of it in our decision. For example, any such works, you're taking it, the proviso in A, sub room number one, any such works referred to in whatever shall not result in any enlargement or additions. It will result in new or increased sightlines into one ten, one oh eight. It's very subjective, you know, I just wouldn't feel comfortable and I've, you're saying you've seen applications where they're imposing this as a condition, but this is not, this seems to be something between private parties and I think you have that protection, but in terms of, you're here giving us submissions here, I guess, in opposition, but then you're saying if you get this, you withdraw your opposition, but you're here anyway, making the, making submissions. So I don't know what the other members feel, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, and I think staff is advising that having this Schedule A put in as a, in our decision is a, something we we shouldn't be doing. And I would agree with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable that at least part of that agreement is reflected in the site plans that the city has some vested interest in.
Right, but it's, it's already in the site plan, then it's already in the site plan. We don't need.
Yeah, regarding the windows that look onto the rear yard, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. We have some plans that are dated and we can refer to in the decision. Yeah, but beyond that, I'm, I'm not that comfortable with that.
So are you ready to make a motion? Or is someone ready to make a motion?
Michael?
Yes.
I'm just, I have a question for the applicant. Just looking at the basement plans, apartment eight and nine, what are the, what's the square footage of those apartments? The totals, the totals square footage?
Right. I'm just looking at the plan.
Okay. Like, I'm just, I'm, I guess my question is around like quality of living and the size of those spaces, just, just curious.
Yeah, it's not identified on the, on the plans, but the bedrooms are, you can see that they, they are indicated. So bedroom, apartment seven, the bedroom is a hundred and eleven square feet. Eight is ninety-eight square feet and apartment nine is ninety-seven square feet.
Yeah, I see that. I was just wondering the total, the total apartment space.
Okay, Mr. McKay, if it was an under, any of those apartments were undersized, would it not, would not that show as a variance? So I have to assume that the, that all those apartments meet the size requirement?
There is no size requirement here under the bylaw.
There isn't. I know there used to be, at least in some of the city of Toronto downtown, there used to be a certain size which certainly caused it to be smaller.
If there isn't some bylaws, some, some requirements for minimum sizes.
Anyways, anyone ready to make a motion?
I'm comfortable that the variances requested are minor in nature. Conditional that they're tied to the site plans submitted and that the notation that engineering has asked for be added to the site plans as well.
Okay. Which notation is that? The?
It's regarding.
Oh, against having to tell tenants that there's limited parking available.
That's, that's right, yes.
Okay. Okay, would you second it for the?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, you have your, you have your approval unanimously. Thank you, but we will, there's no reference to that schedule. So whether the neighbors agreed or didn't agree, the application has been approved, but that Schedule A, you can take comfort of that being a private agreement, but we are not, that is not a condition of our approval. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chair, Nine Hillcroft Drive is actually a file that should be closed.
Okay.
The applicant has requested that they be closed. It was scheduled originally in February of this year. It was deferred.
A proper notice.
For March twenty-sixth. Then because of the declared emergency, obviously it wasn't heard and we put it on the agenda. But the applicant has decided to proceed with alternate plans due to the current situation. So they are asking for a refund. Under the current policy.
No refund.
They wouldn't be entitled to a refund. But it's in your hands now. So if you can include that in your motion to close the file and decide on, on a refund.
Someone make a motion to close the file and deny the refund? Work was all done. It was circulated. It was even here up before the committee, so they wouldn't justify. The only time we give a refund less a certain amount is when the file has not been worked on.
Yes, and I'm guessing they would have proceeded in March, but because of COVID, they weren't able to. And they're stating financial reasons that they've decided to change their mind.
Okay, makes sense. So a motion to close the file?
Mr. Chair, I'll move closure to reflect the applicant's wish and deny the request for a refund based on the fact that staff have put considerable time into considering this matter.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, file is closed. No refund. Okay, so we'll move on to our last application of the afternoon, item number twenty, one oh two Lake Promenade.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, we actually have Arlene Beaumont listed as the, the agent. It says Christine Utred, but it's actually Arlene Beaumont.
Arlene Beaumont?
Yes, sir.
Okay, duly noted. So, just go to this. Okay. This is an application to construct a two-story east side addition, a new front porch and enlarge the existing rear deck. We have the material submitted with the application as well as location map, survey plans, minutes, a previous decision, supporting material being the Long Branch character guidelines. We have a planning report dated May the seventh and a further planning memo as well. It's a memo dated February fifth for information. And what's the May seventh, the more recent one? Is please be advised, I'm trying to open so I can read it. Oh, it says that the planning report still stands. Okay. Good to know. So is Arlene Beaumont there?
Yes, I'm here, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, and is Christine Mercado there?
Christine is not, Christine.
I, I am here, actually.
Okay, welcome. So let's hear from Arlene Beaumont and give us a brief presentation, then we'll hear from Christine Mercado.
So we're here today to request one variance only. That's for floor space index of zero point six seven. There are no variances for height or side yard setbacks. I just like to give you a little bit of history. Back in two thousand and seven, the property owners applied for variances to permit an FSI of zero point five eight, and that was for a proposed second story addition. And in addition to the side of the house for an attached garage. What actually happened was they, they completed the second story addition, but they never did the attached garage with living space above. So they're coming back now to do that attached garage with the living space above. The reason that we have to revise the FSI, in the original two thousand and seven plans, there was a large balcony on top of the garage as well as some living space. In the plans that we're proposing now, the balcony has been removed and the entire length of the attached garage is now living space upstairs. So, so above the garages is living space, the entire length of it. So we've now had to come back to you and ask for a variance for FSI because it's gone up since the two thousand and seven plans.
Right, so you basically have a right to do, go to point five eight.
Yes, that's correct.
You have the right under the previous approval. It still stands, correct?
That's correct.
Now you're looking for point six seven, which planning points out in their report for information would be one of the highest in the area. I would note it's, you know, typically in Long, we're seeing new builds. This is just, this is an addition.
Yes, that's correct. So I would like to just speak about the current plans and if, if there's a streetscape drawing that we submitted, that would be good to look at. Because I, I did like to address the curb appeal of the existing houses, perhaps not as good as it should be because of the addition. There's some odd window placements. There's fresh doors on the second floor that kind of lead to nowhere. And the house kind of looks a bit of a mishmash. So I think the proposed front elevation is much cleaner. Windows are symmetrical. You know, the window above the, on the second floor is the same size as the window on the first floor. So there is some real attention to improving the, the streetscape of this home with the new, with the new addition. Also, I think the designer has done a good job with an articulated roof line that is going to help to try and reduce that, the appearance of massing on, on the home. As I am in receipt of the letter from the Long Branch Neighborhood Association, I just would like to speak to a little chart that they provided with the letter. I understand what they're trying to do, but I would say that the chart is a little bit misleading. First of all, because there's several applications that were related to consents. So if the consent was refused, then obviously the variances would have been refused. The other thing is there's a few applications or a few variance applications that they haven't included on this chart that they've given. And the other thing is even the ones that they're showing as refused, some of those had multiple variances. We don't know why they were, why they were refused. We, we don't know if they refused just for the floor area or if it was because of there's a, there were several variances for that home that just amounted to overdevelopment of the lot. So I understand what they're trying to do, but I think they're, you know, it's a little bit misleading what they've, what they've provided here in this letter. I think that the plans that we've got here are an improvement over what's existing. And I think that if the streetscape drawing that we have illustrates that the, the house does work on this street.
Okay, thank you. So I hear what you're saying. You're basically distinguishing this from a new build, which, you know, Long Branch is all about, you know, this new, so the fact that you're keeping what you have and just adding on is different and you're saying that's reflected in their statistics because often, and you are coming with only the single variances, what you're telling us, as opposed to some of these others may have had, we know, often have many, many variances. And they were generally for new builds. But let's hear what the, you know, the, Long Branch is a very special neighborhood and that as a result, they have these neighborhood guidelines because it's been recognized as an important area. So let's hear from the chair of that association and let her weigh in and you'll have a chance to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Christian Mercado and I am the chair of the Long Branch Neighborhood Association. And I live at eleven Atherton Crescent. So as the applicant has actually outlined, was that we did submit a, we did submit a, a chart and some information for the, for the the committee to consider. And it was not my intent to mislead, however, it was to speak to the broader impact of approving such a point, such a high FSI on an undersized lot. So undersized lots are not unheard of in Long Branch. However, they do end up having, having to have some difficulties with regards to applying different variances to it. So what I was trying to point out was that point six seven FSI is not reflective of the prevailing FSI or FSI variances along Lake Promenade, Elton, or the broader neighborhood, which I've used for as a study area. So as far as a point five eight, even point five eight on an undersized lot is on the top end. And after, after I looked at some of these information and the decisions that I submitted to the, to the AIC site, I, I looked at Mr. Tonellus's sentence and it is true. He speaks at point six seven being amongst the highest, but I couldn't find one that was higher and that was representative of such a small lot. So this would actually be contrary to OP Policy four point one point five C. So it's prevailing massing scale of nearby residential properties that this application would be contrary. So, and these are decisions that are related since two thousand and eight. So and these are decisions that have been made by committee and I do agree with the pattern of decisions that the committee has made. So if you're looking at more current decisions and considering the broader neighborhood, this committee also refused a point six zero application for part one and two at thirty thirty-sixth Street in twenty nineteen. So those are two twenty-five foot lots that are side by side. And an appeal decision was just delivered two days ago by T-Lab and it was an FSI refusal of point six zero for part one and part two of eighty twenty-third street. So I also, we're looking forward to what is being approved for the future. So what's in the pipe right now? We've got actually three applications. We've got fifty Lake Prom, one seventy Lake Prom and two ninety Lake Prom. Fifty Lake Prom is a severance proposal with a proposed point seven one FSI. One seventy is a point eight nine FSI and two ninety is a point nine two FSI and located in a block of historical designated homes on Lake Promenade. So there's no surprise that this area is being targeted by builders. This is not these applicants, but they're looking to build something new and change the low density character of the neighborhood and in return, they remove mature trees and reduce plantable space. So we do think that Long Branch is a special place, but we also feel that Lake Promenade is not just any street. It's known nationally as a great trail and goes from coast to coast and locally as a, excuse me, as a waterfront trail. It was recently designated as a quiet street by the city and is a destination for local residents and visitors. So in approving this application, you're actually sort of pushing the bar for undersized lots in Long Branch that actually we've been trying to preserve sort of the space in the plantable space on these undersized lots. And approving such a big FSI actually fuels things like severances
Yeah.
with high FSIs as well as overbuilds on smaller lots that reduce plantable straight and reduce plantable space and take away trees. And finally, I'm also quite puzzled because in waiting for our application to come up, I was looking over the designs as well. And there's a variance that I believe has been missed on, on the, on the east side where there's a point nine side yard setback. And it hasn't been identified as, as a variance. It's actually supposed to be a one point two meter side yard setback and that is, that is, that is the bylaw that is in force on this property.
Interesting. Thank you, Ms. Mercado, for that. And actually, while we're looking into this issue about this missed variance, I have a question for you in terms of, and I agree with you, you mentioned on severances. I always, you've been before us, I always point out that a severance is more of a right than a privilege than a right. First, you're asking to split a lot, make it smaller than is permitted. And then you're trying to jam too much house on that severed lot. So specifically on severances, when they push the envelope, I agree that that's sort of really taking advantage because first you're getting to split your lot and then you're looking to overbuild on your new split lot. So I'm asking if your association, which I'm disagreeing with in this neighborhood, takes a distinction between an application on the existing lot versus a severed lot and also an addition versus a new build. In other words, I know you don't, you know, there's not, you don't like these new three-story boxes with flat roofs, but when at least they're taking an existing house and, you know, it's up, I don't know if you agree with the applicant. She says it's actually making it more, you know, increasing the curb appeal and all of those things for the neighborhood. So that would be my question, whether you, your association looks differently at severances, existing lots as opposed to new lots and new builds as opposed to additions.
We do try and look at every application. We do try and look at every application by its own merit. And when we looked at this particular lot, and I've looked at this property many, many times, and this one, this one is difficult because, because the, the proposed revisions are going to, are going to help people stay in their home. However, on a broader scale, 25-foot lots are at a 40% in, excuse me, in this part of the neighborhood. And it ends up fueling, fueling a fire that's difficult to sort of, that's difficult to reinforce because 0.35 may be very stringent for, for a 25-foot lot with a shallow frontage, which is this particular lot. However, 0.67, and you start bumping it up. And it, what it does is that it just reinforces, and if you spent as much time in T-Lab as I have, you find that those numbers start adding up and they just fuel inappropriate, inappropriate builds on different lots. And unfortunately, the rules should be applied equally to all people.
Yeah.
Like it's, it's not just for builders, it's not just for residents, it's for everybody.
And I, and agree with you because if we, if this application gets granted, and luckily your, your organization will be there to point out what's happening. They'll say, oh, we can do 0.67 on new builds now and on severed lots on Lang Branch, in particular, and Lake Promenade in particular, which is a very important street. But we have the Long Branch Association, so they hold on a second. If they try to make that argument to point out that this was not a new build, not a new lot, it was an addition. And whether you can support it or you're just saying it's way too big, otherwise, no matter what it is, no matter which way you slice it, you think that that 0.67 number is not supportable at all?
Right, and quite frankly, when, on those two recent, the Committee of Adjustments decision in 30, on 36th Street, and then the T-Lab decision on 23rd Street, that is still the geographic neighborhood. They're, so they're a little bit further, however, those are 20, new 25-foot lots. And they keep on trying to drive down the approve, approvable FSI and they get quite low. But it's never close to 0.35, but it's never up to 0.67 by the time you get to an appeal level either.
Okay. Okay, so let's hear just briefly in response from Arlene Beaumont, and then we'll take it in the committee for a decision.
Thank you. I'd like to address the issue of undersized lot.
And perhaps if you can, well, first of all, if you can also touch on the issue that Ms. Mercado pointed out that we may be missing a variance and staff is, I assume, checking on that as well?
Yes, well, all I can say to that is that we applied based on a zoning review. And I believe that that side yard setback is existing. And we're not doing anything on that side of the house. The side of the house that she's talking about is the side that's away from the construction that we're proposing.
Right, but it doesn't matter if it's a variance, it has to be identified on the, on the notice. And if it's not, if it's not identified and it should have been, then it's, we don't have a proper notice here. And which make, which means it would have to be deferred in any case.
Yes. If, if chat staff could just check, because I believe we did have a zoning review and that was not caught on the zoning review.
Staff can make mistakes too, the zoning review. I'm not saying it's your mistake. I'm just, it may be missing as, as Ms. Mercado has pointed out to us. So anyway, just proceed in the meantime to answer the other issues in terms of the 0.67 being very high. You know, I, and, and the fact that this is not a new build, it's not a severance, but it, it's an addition, but it's still at 0.67.
Right, I, I would just quickly speak to the undersized lot issue. As, as I said, it's a, it's a lot of record. The zoning by lot requires a 12-meter frontage, our frontage is 11.48 meters. In terms of lot area, the zoning by law requires 370 square meters. Our lot is 360.33 square meters. So it's not terribly undersized. It is slightly undersized, but it is a lot of record. It was not something that was created by consent.
Correct.
In terms of the FSI, I have four or five properties that have been approved at higher FSIs in the neighborhood. 93 Lake Promenade, which is across the street, was approved at 1.48. Now, I understand it, it did go to T-Lab and there are some extenuating circumstances there, but it was approved at 1.48. 3427th Street was approved at 0.74 in 2016. 9 Meaford at 0.7 in 2016. 5 Ramsgate at 0.69 in 2016. And there was a couple of ones a little bit earlier, one in 2012 for 1 Ramsgate at, for 0.068. And 5931st Street at 0.67 in 2018. So there, this is not the only home in the neighborhood with an FSI, you know, a 0.67 or higher. There have been others approved. And I, as I, as I mentioned, I think that the designer has done a good job with rooflines and with designing the links to hide massing, to disguise it a little bit so that it's not something that you would readily notice from the street. I think the house next door that also has attached garage would appear larger than what we're proposing for the lot at 102 Promenade.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, any questions for either the applicant or the chair of the Long Branch Association? Or are we ready for a motion? And just checking to see if staff is able to determine whether we're missing a variance?
It's really up to the zoning examiner to determine if there is a variance missing, but this application is by way of waiver.
Okay.
So they've identified the variance.
Oh, so there was no zoning review?
For this hearing, no.
Okay. The applicant and, did you hear that? That there was no zoning review? You proceeded by way of waiver?
Okay.
So if it was missed.
I didn't, wasn't aware of that.
It would have been, wouldn't have been staff's fault this time.
Okay. So then I guess our, our choice is to defer to add the, the variance for side yard setback? Mr. Chair, is our choice to defer to add the variance?
I'm looking to staff for input, I guess if you get, we haven't, we're not going to determine whether it is a missing variance. But if it is, then you would, would have to come back. And I assume they have to come back, you wouldn't, if it was, in this case, if it wasn't a staff error, you might have to pay again as well, perhaps.
Yes.
If you're missing a variance. If it was staff's error, you wouldn't have to pay again. But since you didn't proceed by way of a zoning review, you went by waiver, then it was at your peril. So I think it's a little late in the day to defer. We've now spent, you know, 25 minutes hearing this application?
Yes.
So I guess it's in, we're in committee now anyway, so I'm waiting for a motion. We've heard from the applicant, we heard from the ratepayers, and now you responded, and now we're in, in decision, in committee for decision. Someone ready to make a motion?
I think that the applicant's done a good job trying to match into the area here with a new facade. I like the design. I'm going to say that the variances are minor, meet the four tests of the Planning Act. So I'm going to move for approval. Looks like it's subject to a forestry tree permit.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion for approval, subject to the urban forestry, urban forestry condition? Do you have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? And I will abstain to avoid a tie. So the motion carries two to one. The application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beaumont and Ms. Mercado, as always. Thank you. And it is now 24.
No, we, we.
Oh, right, we have to close files.
Yeah. So there's also a change there where 15 Allen Avenue is to stay open. So we have two files to close, 40 Titan Road and 103 Rexdale Boulevard.
Okay. Someone make a motion?
I will move to close A 495-19EYK and A 0091-20EYK.
Also known as 44 Titan, 40 Titan, 103 Rexdale.
103, yes.
Seconder? All in favor? Files closed. Any other business before we adjourn?
No. Hey, Mishi, how was your experience there at home?
Not bad.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're terminating the meeting at 3:40, right?
Yeah, don't say what Neil said.
Yeah.
Get in trouble.
Okay, Adam, can you mute the mic? The hearing's over.